And we're grateful for, for the blessings that we enjoy. We're thankful for the country that we live in and for this city and for all those who serve it and grateful for the residents as well that live here and for the beauty that we enjoy. We ask a blessing to be with our governmental leaders in, in our country and at our local level as well. Pray that thou bless them with wisdom and strength and pray for, especially for those who protect us and service each day. We pray that thou would watch out for them, their families. We are grateful for all that we have. We ask that thou bless us to have guidance tonight. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Morrison, Councilmember Saunders. Appreciate that. We'll move on to item number three on here, our public presentation. Residents attending this meeting will be allotted two minutes to express a concern or ask question about any issue that is not on the agenda. No action counter will be taken on any issues represented. Do we have someone that would like to come up at this time? Just remember to state your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Anderson. I've been addressed forty-two oh four west, forty-four fifty southwest Haven, Utah. Also own property over thirty-seven sixty-nine south, forty-seven hundred west. Been a part of West Haven my whole life. Ran and operated Anderson Auto Body for the past thirty years. So currently just sold that and kind of looking to do some other stuff. I put in for a business license and it's got X-nade because of the zoning thing not being a full acre lot. And I get that. I'm point nine seven, kind of like really close to being an acre. And I'm kind of asking for some forgiveness for maybe trying to have a, a business out of my house. What I would like to do is I'd want to, I, I get a lot of customers in the past thirty years that's bought junk cars that they should not be buying. RV trailers and I, I want to get out and inspect these for the general public. So they're aware of what they're purchasing. Some of this will have to do with coming to my shop and being put up on the hoist and, and inspected. So I'm not going to be having a ton of cars there or RV trailers. I just, I will have one car, maybe one trailer and that's it, you know, out of my house garage, but it's not going to be. I know there's been a few businesses that have put a bad name on that, kind of ruined it, but kind of just asking maybe if we could work a way to just to get this passed, that would be awesome. Even if you give me some stipulations or restriction to go buy, hey, Mike, no more than two trailers outside on your lot or one car or, or whatever, you know, I want to keep the city looking good too. I've ran Anderson Auto Body for the past thirty years and I feel like I've done a pretty good job keeping a nice looking yard. So just maybe ask them if you guys can give it some thought if we can push that license through and that would be awesome. If not, tell me no and I'll figure something else out. So.
What was the lot size again? You said nine seven?
I got point nine seven acres. Point nine six, nine seven, something like that.
What was the street address again? I didn't catch that.
Forty-two oh four west, forty-four fifty southwest Haven, Utah. So I'm just right over here. The dirt road's in my backyard, just right here.
Oh, okay. I know where.
You also mentioned you had another piece of property in West Haven?
Well, I own three acres over across the street from Dow Screens where, where Anderson Auto Body currently is.
Oh, okay.
So if you guys talk about it or if you have any questions, let me know. You know, I'd just like you to give it some thought so we can push through and maybe make this happen and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with our item number four on here, our upcoming events. We have our budget kickoff meeting, which we're pretty excited about on February twenty-fifth of this year at five thirty PM. And we're going to be doing that at the community center. So I hope everybody's got that on their schedule. And we're looking forward to getting together for that. We have our senior lunch bunch. It'll be the next day, February twenty-sixth, and that'll be at eleven thirty AM. We have our Easter egg hunt coming up in April. We jumped ahead quite a bit on that, but we want to make sure that we're advertising that to be prepared for it. That'll be like, say, on April nineteenth at nine AM. And it's been pretty traditional to try and be on time for that. And those kids got other cities to hit, right? They gotta be on time. So we're excited. Any other upcoming events, council, that you want to, you know of? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, our council updates. Any reports on our assignments that we have?
Um, Councilmember I Saunders, we had a question about the signs for the yard of the month. Are we supposed to pick those up or do they get to keep them?
No, they can keep them if they want to.
Put them in their scrapbooks.
Yeah, if they don't want them, then we'd be happy to take them back and use them, you know, in the future. But yeah, thanks. That's a good question.
All right. Anything else from council members? Okay, just so people are aware, if you're not aware, legislation is in full swing at the state Capitol building. We're staying pretty busy with that. There's a lot going on. So just so you know, we're in two, two plus weeks of legislation and we've got quite a few things going on up there. A lot of bills to keep in mind for, within our city and within our district. So we'll be anxious to see how those all come about. We get the chance to sit in on those meetings on Mondays and get updates on those. So we'll try and keep everyone up to date on those. We'll move on to item six, action on our consent agenda. We have our city council minutes that were held on January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. And we have an item B Weaver County Sheriff's Office, our quarterly payment on that for four hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars on that. Any questions on the consent agenda? If none, I'm ready for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve consent agendas A and B. Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council on that? Okay, we'll do a real call on that. Councilmember Call?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, passes on the consent agenda. We appreciate that. We'll move on to item seven on here, our presentation. This is a report on our Utah League of Cities and Towns and our official's youth council day. I know.
We seem to be missing a few youth, just a few. Yes. Sarah, could I have you come up? I'd like to introduce you to the council. This is Sarah Nguyen and she is our awesome new advisor. And she's frantically texting down there to find out where everyone who said they were going to be here is right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm busy making a speech in my mind, like my first time at this rodeo called city council meeting. As a youth advisor, I've been stood up. It's been decades since that's happened to me. And lucky all of you got to enjoy the moment. So have a good laugh on my behalf.
No, I, I've been here. This is not my first rodeo. So would you explain a few of the things that we've talked about as far as council and some of the things that we would like to, to do?
So what, we're kind of doing a rebuild sort of thing. We talked to the kids. Normally the youth council year would start in August. Since we're more than halfway through that, we asked the kids if they would just maintain the positions they had last year. They unanimously voted to do that. Took a bunch of assignments, one of those being to get a digital version of our youth city council application. And as soon as we can get that on board, hopefully this week, we would like to kind of do a recruiting fair. We've already talked to the elementary schools. The high school is very excited. Talked to the civics teacher at Westfield High and was like, yes, I've got five or six kids. I'm like, if you've got anybody that's a potential social science Sterling scholar. So that's going to be the major thing is I think get that, get some more members. I think we would like to see twenty, maybe thirty kids. That may take another year till we do. I don't know how this year we'll finish out. You'll talk about the legislature and then we will be helping with the Easter egg hunt in March. So.
Yes. So we, we were, we got to go to the ULCT Day at the Capitol, which was awesome. The kids were excited. We talked all the way home about what the presentation was going to look like tonight, but they got the chance to look at some bills being passed by other youth councils, which was very interesting for them. They asked questions in the public opinion, public part of the meeting. So they got a real feel for the city council and we were also able to have a lunch with our lieutenant governor as well as others. And we were a little disappointed that our representatives were not there to meet us. But we did meet some other representatives from some other towns. So and they got a chance to meet with people who work at the Capitol. We got a tour of the Capitol. And they have some ideas of things that other youth councils were doing that they would like to incorporate, that they would be happy to tell you about if they were here. But anyway, it was a good thing. I was really impressed with how it was handled. It was very structured. It was on time. Everything ran smoothly and they had a really good time. So I'm glad that we went.
I agree with that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate all the work you're doing on that. I know it's like herding cats sometimes. But thank you as a liaison. Thank you, Councilmember Dixon, for attending with them as well. That's, it's really a cool opportunity. And we've tried for years to get the kids out there, but that's great. All right, we'll go ahead on item eight. We'll go ahead and move that to another time because it would be best to do that then, obviously. And then we'll move to item nine is.
I would recommend, yeah, I would recommend we move that down a little bit. It looks like he's not here yet. So, okay.
Sounds good.
What, what is going on out there?
Is our clock's ahead? Could be. But anyway, no, that works out fine. We can do that. We'll move that down. So is it okay with the council if we move that on our agenda? Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and do that. Next we'll do, why don't we just go ahead and do our item ten for our introduction for our sheriffs? Can we do that now? Would that be okay?
Thanks, Mayor and council members for letting us take some time tonight. We have a long history, the sheriff's office in West Haven. So you understand the change that we go through sometimes. We again had some change. As you can see, Lieutenant Lively is no longer a lieutenant anymore. He carries a little bit more stars on his uniform now. He got promoted to a peer of mine. So he's the chief deputy over our operations division. We've done a little bit of restructuring in that operations division and made some changes that don't affect our contract cities. But with that, I was down two lieutenants. We had a county security chief that we had to promote that Lieutenant Ryan took. So I was missing one there. And then obviously Lieutenant Lively's position now Chief Lively's position in investigations. So we held promotions and promoted Sean Ensley. He'll be taking Chief Lively's spot in investigations and as your liaison for West Haven. And then Lieutenant Slater is filling that other spot. And he'll be the liaison for Hooper. So a neighboring city for you. I'm sure you'll get to know Kylie as well. I'll let Sean do some introductions here and kind of tell you a little bit about himself. I've had the opportunity to supervise Sean for a very long time. You're getting an excellent, excellent lieutenant and liaison. Both Lively and I think the world of Sean. He does a great job. He's taught us a lot. He comes with a wealth of knowledge. He may not think that he has that vast knowledge. Maybe a little nervous in the lieutenant position, but he will do a fantastic job. So after Sean does some introductions, I'll kind of go over Sean asked to kind of give you the state of where we're at personnel wise. And I'll cover that real quick.
Hello, council. Again, my name is Sean Ensley. Just got this lieutenant promotion over the weekend. It's effective. I've lived in, I lived in West Haven for a few years, but professionally I've got experience in our jail division. I've got experience here in enforcement. I was a detective for about six and a half years. I investigated crimes against children. Went back out to patrol as a patrol sergeant from that. But during those detective years, I had a couple of cool assignments. I was on our homicide task force. I was a team leader there. I received a certification in internal affairs investigations. Been to all sorts of cool trainings and certifications. So I hope to be coming here with a wealth of knowledge and experience that'll, that'll serve well, but I look forward to working with all of you.
Glad to have you.
Congratulations to both of you on your promotions. Keep saying, seeing changes there because of these promotions. So that's okay.
Yeah, and I don't know that Lively is in a congratulatory mood. He's learning that chief life is different than lieutenant life. So.
Well, we've, we've trained him well all the way through. Been good.
Well, welcome you back whenever you want to come back. So.
Update on personnel and stuff like that. So we have six people currently on FTO. We've got, well, seven. We've got one coming off on the fifteenth. So actual positions vacant. We have ten deputy positions and four corporal positions. Those corporal positions we're phasing out. So they are technically deputy positions. Once we phase out the rest of the corporal rank. So fourteen positions overall. On paper, which is the other one we look at, we have two currently in the academy. They won't occupy a position number until they graduate the academy. So twelve positions is what we're down now. We have those, the rest of those six coming off FTO in April. So we've already started a plan to start moving some of those positions that we lost in investigations, which is a priority for us now. We've started moving some of them back. We were down to one child welfare detective. We've since added another child welfare detective now. We have two more that are going back to investigations in April when those six come off FTO. And then we've got a corporal who's in investigations who has been promoted. It takes effect in June. He will come out in June. And another corporal will go in. So we're getting our numbers back up in investigations, more importantly, in child welfare. Which we've seen a lot of those types of cases here in West Haven this last year. Sean will be a big help to that with his knowledge. He's already got plans to bolster investigations and help in those cases. So we're excited for that. With the two that we have in the academy, we, we have interviewed three laterals. I say laterals, they're not currently working as Leo, law enforcement officers. But they are certified and they have some experience. So they're in background right now. We'll get them through. That gives us five more bodies to fill those vacancies. So we're doing good on filling bodies and putting bodies in cars and getting cars out on the street and making that presence. We're also working well in getting back investigations. I've got to have a meeting with Lieutenant Ensley. As we continue to grow and get bodies back, we need to have a discussion on strike force and street crimes. And where that priority lies, whether it's street crimes or strike force currently we're down. We only lost two deputies to Ogden. We were standing to lose seven. But with some things that we were able to do in the sheriff's office and at the commission level, we were able to keep five and only lost two. But one of those positions was at the strike force. We're operating now with only one sergeant at the strike force. So we'll evaluate that moving forward and see what's better for our contract cities. And what's better for unincorporated county moving forward as we get to filling those positions. But investigation is a high priority. Obviously patrol is our first priority. And then as we backfill that, we'll get to investigation. So some good things. The only thing that we, as an executive staff, the sheriff and the chiefs worry about is we had Julie run some numbers on years of service. And between the jail and enforcement, fifty-four percent of our officers are zero to five years. So we lost a lot of knowledge through retirement incentives over the last five years and things like that. And laterals to other agencies. So we're, it's not panic mode, but we have a lot of, of young deputies on the road. We still have a fair amount of number between five to ten, ten to fifteen. The guys like me and Lively who are in that twenty plus, there's not very many of us left, but they like to kick us out after a while anyway. So.
Can I ask you, how many of you lost to laterals to other law enforcement agencies? Do you know?
I can get that number and send it to Sean, but I don't have an exact number. I know in this latest round of recruitment by Ogden City Police Department, it was just two.
And it's mostly for wages? Is that what you?
Mostly, yeah. We were able to keep mostly for, the two that left was for wages. And I obviously can't speak to their family situation or why they left, but I think the more important thing to look at is the five that we kept, we kept because of the work that's being done at, at our executive and command level. The partnerships that we have with the cities. I was telling the mayor the other night at our quarterly city meeting and Sean, I don't think we've had a better relationship with our contract cities than what we have now. And West Haven has been leading that charge. So we appreciate that from you and all of our contract cities. It, it helps in what we're doing. So those five that stayed really stayed for the environment and not so much the pay. And the understanding that we are working to get better pay and things like that. So.
Do you recall what the number was you gave us last time when you came in and gave us this presentation, what the open, what the vacancies were, that number? Was it twenty-five?
I think, do you remember? Yeah, I think twenty-five. It was in the twenties.
Yeah. Well, it looks like you guys are working to try and fill them. And, and I know we appreciate that. And I know it's tough.
And, and part of that really, and credit needs to go to our corrections chief, Chief Reese. We get a lot from corrections, but it's a slow process because he has to backfill his positions that are vacant before he can release some to us. And it's about three every six months that he tries to give to us. But that's a great partnership between myself and Chief Reese to try to fill the vacancies on both sides. So.
Perfect. Yeah, it was enjoyable to have that meeting the other night and, and just learn a little bit more. We've got another meeting coming up that'll be informative and helpful too. So.
Yeah, I think we're on the right path and doing some good things. So.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that report. Thanks. And congratulations to our, our gentleman down here. And we appreciate all the work you guys do. All right, we'll move on to our next item on here that we can jump to on our item nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So presentation on our community star award for, and I hope I pronounced your name right. Is it Weeloth? Okay, boy, thank goodness. Did a, did a decent job on catching that one for sure. Well, we'd, I'd like to just read a little bit. We had a, we had our marriage appreciation dinner the other night and we were able to recognize some what we call our community star awards. And what we do with that is we celebrate, we celebrate citizens, employees, businesses who are leading the way and are selflessly adding to the richness of our city overall. Citizens through their service and dedication and enhance the quality of life of our residents. West Haven residents or businesses who bring ideas and solutions to our attention or show camaraderie and compassion to others. And recipients that receive the award will be recognized as those that have the best interest in our community at hand. And with that said, I'd like to just read this through if I can. In twenty twenty-four, we as members of the community unfortunately saw a rise in child homicide in our city of West Haven. In July, we lost a young boy Gavin Peterson to child abuse homicide at the hands of the people who should have been his protectors. And in September, we were shocked to hear of a murder suicide that took the lives of three small children. In just a few months span, the short staff Weaver County Sheriff's Office was busy taking some very difficult calls in our city and so in some cases required to make some very quick and fast decisions. One of those calls and the decisions made resulted in saving the lives of two children who may have had the same fate as other previously mentioned children, if it weren't for their quick thinking and skillful bravery. On August fifth of twenty twenty-four, deputies Riley, Ross Kelly and Parker Weeloth responded to a report of a threatened suicide. A family member called dispatch reporting that an adult male was threatening self-harm and possibility, possibility, harm and possibility into the influence of drugs and the adult male was acting erratically. Upon arrival, deputies found a chaotic domestic scene and began communicating with the individual who was in possession of an edged weapon and holding two children hostage. Deputies attempted to de-escalate the situation and verbally worked to get the adult male to release the children. Unfortunately, the adult male escalated the situation, making statements of harm to one of the children. Thus forcing the deputies to make a split second decision to save the lives of the two children. Two deputies fired rounds in, at the adult male resulting in his death and ultimately allowing him to rescue both children without harm. The deputies were able to safely remove everyone from the apartment without further injury. No other family members or deputies sustained injuries. The adult male was pronounced deceased at the scene by medical personnel. Deputy Parker Weeloth has been with the sheriff's office since twenty twenty and has served in both patrol and the street crimes unit. Deputy Riley Ross Kelly has been serving on the patrol since he started in twenty twenty-one. Both of these deputies come from law enforcement, law enforcement families. As a council, we are incredibly grateful for the deputies Weeloth and Ross Kelly for their bravery shown on August fifth, for their ability to make a split second decision that would result in saving the lives of two children and for their dedicated service to Weaver County and especially for the city of West Haven. Most of us are lucky to never have be put in this situation. But we're grateful for the folks like them willing to stand in the line of fire and risk their own lives here in West Haven especially. We appreciate all you do. We got a little award here for you. Of course, we'd like to thank the council for all you guys do and, and support of this and making sure that they get recognized for the things that they do in our city especially. So thank you, sheriff's office, for all you do. All right, let's see. Let's move on to item eleven on here, our presentation for our audit review for Ulrich and Associates. And I think we have a wonderful representative here to share this information with us.
Oh, yeah. My name is Heather Christopherson. I am with Ulrich and Associates. We are the independent auditors for the city. I'm here to review the audit for the June thirty, twenty twenty-four year. You all have paper copies. Emily, are you able to pull up the audit for online? Okay. And I believe we also have Amy electronically. So I welcome her to jump in if I make a mistake. We've completed this and I wanted to first go over basically the findings for the audit. There aren't any. We made no proposed journal entries. There are no state compliance findings. There is a single audit this year. There were no findings associated with that. And we don't even have any recommendations. We looked, we couldn't find anything to recommend. So what that really means is you've got a good staff in place and you've got good people that are managing the financial side of things. And it takes a lot of work to put this all together. So I appreciate everything that Amy and Emily have done and Ryan's office to put this together. So it is so clean for us to go through. I'm not going to go through every page because there's sixty some odd pages, but let me just hit a couple of key things for you. The first item that I want to go over is our independent auditors report. It's the first page after the table of contents. It's on our letterhead. This is basically what you're paying for. This is our opinion of the financial statements. They, and it just simply states, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. They're the financial position of the city. This is the main report that everyone's looking for. It is a clean opinion. The next section of the report is called the management discussion and analysis. It summarizes everything that has happened during the year, compares it to prior year activity, and then highlights a few things that have happened during the year. If you read any of this report, I would read those sections. That's going to give you the most information in the best terms and not have all of the accounting lingo to go along with it. On page nine, it's the statement of net position. This is basically the balance sheet for the city. It's full accrual accounting. for the city. It's full accrual accounting, not necessarily how you manage the city. We're required to report on this basis, which includes fixed assets, debt, retirement calculations, all kinds of things that you don't really manage in this way. I'll get to the fund financial statements in a second. But if you were a business, this is how you would be reporting. The next page is page ten, statement of activities. This page is interesting because it's kind of an income statement, but it's set up a little differently. It starts out with on the far left expenses broken out by function and then goes through program revenues. So that's going to be charges for services, grants and contributions. So the goal in this is to see how much is funded by services and grants for your yearly expenditures. So middle of the page, there's a primary government net expense column that shows you of the expenses that were spent during the year, how much was funded and then how much you had to cover by other revenue sources, which would be your sales tax. So for instance, public safety, you've got expenses of 1.8 million. You've got charges for services of 168,000. So essentially you've got to cover 1.7 million in those expenses in other ways and that is covered through taxes, specifically sales tax and and other items listed on the bottom of that page. Any questions so far? Okay, I'm moving on then. Page eleven. This is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. This is modified accrual accounting. So this is more what you manage to. Main interesting item on here, general fund, unassigned fund balance. That's the third line from the bottom, 3.1 million. That's available to be spent in the coming years. We do have state compliance findings. We have to test that for state compliance, make sure it's under a specific amount and you are under that amount. I believe it's about 29% and the max is 35%. The majority of the funding in capital projects is actually restricted and you can see where or how it's restricted in that fund balance section, that last section on that page. Any questions on that page at all? Okay, page thirteen. Statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund balance. This is again modified accrual accounting. So you're not going to see depreciation. You're going to see the cost of purchasing or constructing assets, the the amount that you're expending during the year, not necessarily full accrual accounting. As you can see in the general fund, you've got excess deficient, excess of revenues over expenses. That's the bottom of this middle section there, 3.6 million. Of that, 3.6 million, you transferred out 3 million to the capital projects fund to fund for future expenses. Changes in fund balances at third line from the bottom, still a positive for the general fund, which is adding to your fund balance. Pretty much break even for capital projects. That's also by design. You are spending down some of your fund balance and then we've got the cemetery special revenue fund. And finally, looking at storm drain, this is page fifteen. This is full accrual accounting again. This is your enterprise fund. The only item of note that I've got on here really is the sewer impact fees at the bottom, 963,000 of the net position. Those are restricted monies that you have yet to spend on approved projects that you have collected. And then page sixteen is the income statement essentially for that enterprise fund. We always look at operating income to see if you're charging enough in your fees to cover your operating expenses. We've got operating income of a negative 213. Note that there's a large depreciation number in there. So you've already spent the money on constructing the assets. We're slowly depreciating it over time. So it's not necessarily a cash out, but just an accounting function. And then you've got impact fees and interest to offset that. So your total income is actually almost $40,000 in that fund. And then of course, you've got capital contributions on top of that. In the back of this report, you've got what's related to single audit way back, starting on page fifty-seven. That's just a difference than you've seen in the past. Not much to go over there, except that we've performed the single audit submitted to the clearinghouse and that's all complete. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the council?
Thank you very much.
Easy to understand. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Thanks to those that are on as well that help us so much in our accounting. We appreciate it very, very much. Okay. We'll move on to item twelve on here for action on resolution zero four dash 2025 encroachment license agreement between West Haven City and Utah Department of Transportation regarding parcels along 5100 West. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a item related to the 5100 West project. As the mayor stated, this is property that's owned by UDOT. And so as you know, we're working on towards constructing improvements, including intersection improvements and the parcels that that are shown here are related to the intersection of 51 and 4,000. And we have been working with property owners. We have a form. It's called a right to enter permit, I believe is is the term that we've used and it essentially provides the same function, which is the property owner granting us rights to be able to, you know, construct improvements on or adjacent to their property. UDOT has their own form that that they prefer to use and and for that reason, they proposed the form and were willing to sign it. It is a little different than some of the other forms. Just because they provide transportation facilities and so there are some provisions in there relative to their own interest in in doing the same. But otherwise, we think that it's in form, a proper form for you to consider and and approve and would recommend doing the same.
Thank you for that report. Council, did you get a chance to read through this? Is there any questions to answer? No questions. I'm ready for action on the resolution.
I move that we approve resolution oh four, 2025 encroachment license agreement between West Haven City and Utah Department of Transportation regarding parcels along 5100 West.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council on this resolution? Okay, we'll do a roll call on that. Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Councilmember Call?
Aye.
And Councilmember Schwab?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that, Sean. I appreciate that very much. We'll move on to our next item on thirteen. Action on resolution zero five dash 2025 for professional services agreement between the city and Avenue Consultants for additional property acquisition services.
Mr. Commissioner.
The council is aware that we've had contract with Avenue Consultants for a while to help us with property acquisitions for the three primary ongoing road projects, the 2700 West project and the 3300 South and the 5100 West. Also, as you know, we also have those two potential connector roads from eighteen to twenty-one and thirty-three to thirty-six. Plus also looking at the potential realignment of 1800. Avenue was never specifically contracted for those latter projects. We had to find right of ways and we're looking for property frontage on those initial properties, which is a very different approach and process than what we're looking for to do with the connector roads. Connector roads may be taking from a small portion of a parcel to potentially an entire parcel. And the alignments really aren't firmly set. We're still going through some final engineering, doing some traffic, traffic analysis to talk about how we're going to formulate the intersections and some other design considerations. But nevertheless, they have been engaging all the different property owners. And between the two projects, I think there's thirty-two individual parcels that they've been dealing with. So instead of being able to give us a cost per parcel fee as they did with the right of way acquisitions, this is a little more fluid at this point and it requires a little bit more personal one-on-one engagement between the avenue and and the property owners just to explain the project to them, assess their willingness to work with the city and and get some feedback, which may or may not affect the alignment in the long, in the long term. So they asked us if we would consider amending their contract to add an additional 75 hours for 175 dollars an hour for an amount of about 13,125 dollars. And that will be basically to engage that these ongoing property owners, we plan on having probably two open houses to have those residents come in so they can hear more about the project and get more feedback from the city. And we asked them to put a sort of a midpoint break. Once they get to 50 hours, we'll be able to assess how how those engagements have gone and we could decide whether we need to continue with the allotted 75 hours or we can start looking to formulate some actual negotiations and make some actual acquisitions for those properties. So pretty much it. Mr. Council, is any more questions about this?
Any questions from the council? It's been a little bit of a challenge and.
It has been, but I think that our initial feedback has been very positive. So we're encouraged.
Good, good. If there's no questions, then I'm ready for a motion on this action.
Move to adopt resolution zero five, 2025 professional services agreement between the city and Avenue Consultants for additional property acquisition services.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council on this resolution? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Councilmember Call?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwab?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
The motion carries on that. Move on to item fourteen, action on resolution zero six dash 2025 amending the contract with Staker Parsons for work to be performed in the Windsor Park Phase One project. Again, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an item that we've discussed in the past. Right now, we've awarded a bid to Staker Parson to construct some improvements, primarily utility improvements at Windsor Park, specifically they're extending utilities and they're working on a road that will serve as the access to a parking lot. And when we envisioned this phase of of improvements to Windsor Park, we had a budget number in mind and that was attributed in part to a RAM grant tax award that we received in the amount of 222,000. So there was a equal match required by the city. So the total budget was about 444,000 dollars. The bid from Staker Parson, the original bid came in much lower than we expected and we were grateful for that. That allowed us to move forward with contemplating some additional improvements, which were, we felt like the next logical improvement would be a restroom. And so you amended the budget, I believe in October to add some additional funds that would accommodate an anticipated budget for that improvement. And we, as city staff, reached out to Staker Parson to have them do some work, site work associated with accommodating this restroom. And that amount equals, I believe, about 28,000 dollars. And originally we had budgeted in our budget about 40,000 for the the two pieces of work that they will do. You know, lumped primarily into two line items. And so it's, we believe it's ready for your consideration of of amending the initial award to Staker Parson to include this piece of work. Just one other thing, I think everyone's familiar with the types of restrooms that we put, but they're pre precast or prefabricated, if I'm saying that correctly. I think they're called C X T restrooms that will just drop in place. And that's been ordered as well. So we hope to have this piece of of work done, I would think. You know, late spring, early summer is what I would would hope.
Thank you for that report. Has anyone been over to Windsor Park lately? Seen what they've done? Looks pretty good. I mean, it's real basic. They've got the road cut out and there's, you know, it's looking pretty good. They got the pipes in for infrastructure over to the restroom. And but it does talk on here about the recommendation for that 15%, the 27,000 to repair the sidewalk area. And I hope, hope we don't do that until later in the process to get that done because there's there's a lot of trucks passing over that and causing some damage on that, but it's looking looking really nice over there. I think it'll be good this spring. Any questions from the council? Hey, if not, I'm ready for an action on this resolution.
I'll move to approve action on resolution zero six, 2025, amending the contract with Staker Parsons for work to be performed in Windsor Park Phase One.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council on this resolution? Okay, we'll do a roll call on that. Councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Council, excuse me. Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwab?
Aye.
And Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
And Councilmember Call?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Excited about that. This would be nice to get this part on its way. All right, we'll move on to item fifteen. This is our executive session. The council would consider a motion to enter into a closed meeting for the purpose of a strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation for the purchase and exchange release of real property to be held in accordance with the provisions of Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. And I need a motion to move out of our regular session into an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll go to our closed session and have our.